Ready, Mr. Chair?
Ready.
Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Ray Musket.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our Watershed Stewart's co-director, Steve Robbins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. -- oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, move to approve the Order of Business August 22nd, 2017, regular meeting at Dearborn Heights City Council with the addition of item 8E.
Mr. Sport.
May I suggest we leave a position open for a resolution?
I think you have an item on your --
We do have an item.
-- on the agenda so that we could do something.
That would be under 8B.
Correct.
In conjunction with that.
That's exactly it.
Let me see.
And what is 8E?
8E is the --
Saint Linus Parade.
The Saint Linus Bike Parade?
Yes.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the August 8th, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
Move the council approve the rescheduled meeting of August 8th to August 9th as submitted.
Support. Support by Councilman Musket. Yeah, I'm glad you caught that. Is there any discussion? It was August, yeah. Any discussion?
The election was the 8th, and the charter requires a day later if we cannot --
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 5, any public comment on pending agenda items. I'm Torela Lab.
John Laban, sorry. Item 9C, we still have the bid bonds for the unsuccessful bidders on this project. So I would ask that if you could to approve the return of the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders.
Absolutely.
With the regular motion.
What is that, 9 what?
9C. 9C for the carpet installation project.
Got it.
Thank you.
What'd you say, Dave? Sorry.
Any other comments from anybody on the pending agenda items? Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. The next item on the agenda, item 6, fund transfers and current claims. Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry. That's okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Horvath, go ahead.
I move that the council approve fund transfers and current claims 6-1 through 638.
Support. Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket, and then Councilman Abdullah.
613, the lease of the vehicles by ordinance. Something bothers me here, and it's not to do with anybody in particular, okay? Last week, we also approved the fire department going through Enterprise, and I asked a question about the cars being marked by Enterprise for the fire department, and the answer was yes, but they didn't know what they were going to do with the fire chief or the fire marshal. Now, when we got, when we sat here and we heard the statements made of what was going to happen, how this is going to happen, what they were going to do for us, these vehicles were all supposed to come marked with the seal of Dearborn Heights. Cars have to be marked. We voted on it. That was part of my yes vote to approve this, and some of these cars are not marked with the seal of Dearborn Heights. Now, I don't know why cars are marked and then directors' cars aren't marked. To me, there's no excuse why a vehicle owned by the taxpayers is not marked, not one good reason. That was the agreement. We were told that they were going to come marked. We voted yes, the way it was supposed to be, and then somebody changed that. And that's not for this council didn't change it, somebody else changed it. So how can that happen? That's my question to you, Mr. Chair. How does that happen?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Which cars are not marked?
There are cars that aren't marked.
But which ones?
Some of the director's vehicles aren't marked.
And those are under the Enterprise purchase?
Yes.
Or lease?
Yes. And we were told they were coming marked. That was a criteria of a vote of yes or no. My vote was yes, knowing that that was going to happen. So somebody changed, as far as I'm concerned, the council's vote. And so I'm asking you, Mr. Chair, how does that happen? And what do we do about it?
Mayor, so Enterprise, their, Enterprise didn't change anything. They didn't --
It was on the advice of the PD that only the director's car was not marked, as far as I know. All the ordinance are clearly marked. If you go out there, it's very vivid. It's only the director's car.
Yeah, but there was an issue with some police cars that were going to be used for undercover work that they didn't want to have marked.
That's correct. Police cars are, to me, are, we shouldn't even consider the police on this statement, okay? Police duties are a lot different than fire and ordinance, okay? There's no reason why these cars can't be clearly marked. I want to know where my cars are, and the citizens want to know where their cars are all the time.
Well, in the original motion, I don't believe the motion included that they all be marked. I may be mistaken, but I'll go back and look.
But, Mr. Chair, but, Mr. Chair, when we were given the information about Enterprise, it was specifically said that the cars were coming marked.
May I ask another question? Would it be, would it be, would it be okay if maybe we had maybe a 15-minute discussion with the people whose cars are not marked to hear why they feel that they should not be marked? I'd like to hear it. I understand your point where you say there's no good reason, but I don't know until I hear something.
What I'm saying is, let's finish the discussion about the claims. Any other questions about the claims? We understand Councilman Musket's point, but let's finish the discussion about the current claims, and if we can do that, or we can have a --
I'm not saying do that tonight. I'm saying before a meeting sometime, if we can hear, you know, what their rationality is.
Right, right.
Would you be okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
Any other questions?
If I could just make a quick comment.
Sure.
When the cars come in, we have the lettering, you know, let it be police, fire, DPW. So whenever we buy a car, they don't do the lettering. That is always an aftermarket. We send it somewhere, and I assume, you know, that's how it would come from, wherever you got them from, that you would put the lettering on after. They wouldn't put it on, most likely because they don't have the stuff. So it's usually an aftermarket. Once we get the vehicles --
But I'm not even discussing the police vehicles. To me, as far as I'm concerned, if you want one marked, that's great. If the police department doesn't want it marked, that's good with me, too.
But I'm just saying, in the past, we've helped them letter cars or put on stickers, you know, when they wanted, we'll send them somewhere.
Mr. Chairman.
So they don't come that way, usually from the order.
I think the chief's point is Enterprise doesn't mark the car.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. But, Ms., the councilman is saying that he was under the impression that they would all be --
We spoke about it.
Regardless of whether the Enterprise contract stated it or not, it was supposed to be --
So I'm saying, let's, we understand the councilman's point. Have any other questions about any of their current claims, and then, Councilman, I'm sorry, were you done, Councilman List?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
Okay, so I had a question for Department Head McIntyre. This is in regards to claim number 6-1. I had a question. I thought I seen.
6-1?
Yeah.
A-Land Construction?
Yeah, this is in regards to A-Land Construction invoices for work completed on the sidewalk program. The question I have for you on the statements at the end, these are the ones that are given to the homeowners and signed by the homeowners. It says on there that they agree to pay these fees within 30 days. I just want clarifications for my sake and for the residents' sake. If it is not paid within 30 days, does it automatically go on their tax roll?
Well, it wouldn't go immediately on their tax roll, but by the end of the year, anything that was deemed a special assessment, then it would go onto their taxes.
Okay. I just want to clarify that for some of the residents. And the other question that I had is for Ken Gribble. The amount that we had in payables, this is for the electrical service for the Spirit Festival.
What number is that?
I'm sorry, item number 6-7. And when we had, it wasn't a study session, but it was one of the council meetings, we had a discussion, and I think you mentioned it was a small profit made, which I know that it's not a for-profit situation, but in this particular case, with this bill coming in right now at $4,545, was that accounted for at that particular time? Was this after the fact? Not, it would make it, not that it's a major deal, but it would make it a losing proposition.
No, no, it would still make it a winning proposition. It was included as one of the expenses.
It was included.
Yeah, we're just getting the bills in now, but we knew what the bill was when we did our report.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Any other questions on any fund transfers or current claims? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's six, six yeses and one no. The next item on the agenda, item 8A for Mayor Piletko, Plant Moran-Cressa Agreement relating to Warren Valley Golf Course. Mr. Chair. Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council agree with the mayor, and the city of Dearborn Heights will enter into an agreement with Plant Moran-Cressa for consulting services as it relates to the Warren Valley Golf Course and Banquet Center for an amount not to exceed $30,000 and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign, as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket, and then Councilman Abdullah.
Go ahead, Dave, go ahead.
So I just want a little bit of an update for the residents and for ourselves from the mayor. In this letter, it says this is the last item of due diligence that is necessary to complete the process in a financial review. What other things have been done already, you know, as far as the golf course is concerned? This being the last item.
Well, Gary Meck, he's handling the legal, the title in that area. We've employed White and Trim to do the survey, and all this is all coming together for next month to be completed. Then we have the financial review. Did I miss anything?
Environmental.
Environmental that was being done by our Brownfield group. And so then we'll have the whole four packages, and then present it to all of you.
Okay, excellent. Because there was a deadline, as I recall.
Yeah, there's a deadline of September the 30th. I mean, frankly, if Commissioner Webb was out here, I would ask her to end up potentially extending that, because we haven't gotten some information that requested from the county. But regardless, the title work looks unremarkable. I mean, there's no surprises. County owns the property, and essentially, the easements are easements we already know about. From what we've seen, the survey issues are not looking like there's going to be anything, but we still have to end up taking the initial legal and having that kind of worked out between the surveyors for the county and the city to finalize that and end up making sure all the rightaways are appropriately designated in the final document that we will need, because we'll need like an addendum to what we have. The environmental, the Phase 1 is done, and based on what was found with the Phase 1, we need to do a Phase 2. Our environmental consultant suggested doing a Phase 2 because one of the underground storage tanks that is on property haven't been registered by the county yet, but we're not anticipating that there's going to be any sort of leaks with regard to that. And they want to confirm that there aren't leaks with regard to another one, but other than that, it's looking --
You said underground storage tanks that's currently used?
Yes, there is one that actually the county had, and they haven't registered it, which was really rather unusual. So we need to make sure that they register it so that we're not the ones who are on the hook if there is any sort of an issue with regard to that. The county's in the process of doing so. And then the final thing is the financial issues, and that's where we've had some delay. I just found out yesterday, by the way, that the attorney who was assigned this project has left the county. Just found that out from Corporation Council yesterday in a meeting about something else. So that might explain some of the delay that we ended up having. But, I mean, we're not doing too badly, even though I think we've talked before about how it would make sense for them to give us a little more time, just because I think they kind of jammed us on time in the first place, but.
What about, you mentioned with the Phase 1 that they did, and that's the environmental search that they did. At one point, I'd heard a situation where there had been a landfill, some sort of a garbage fill or something like that. Did that come up? Was that any type of concern as far as when they did the Phase 1?
I don't know that that is actually something that has actually been verified, other than maybe people thinking about it. As far as I know, there's nothing --
Urban legend.
Urban legend.
Right, or, you know, something had ended up happening on the property many years ago or somewhere around there, and then it's a urban legend, yes.
Okay, so it's Phase 1, nothing was found about that?
Other than what I've basically pointed out. I mean, I think the environmental consultants did a good job. I'm sure that Mr. Roscoe and Mr. Oliverio can confirm that. They're out in the, and they've been very helpful. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has been extremely helpful with regard to this.
We want to publicly thank them, and if you would tell them such, but thank you so much. So this thing is starting to come together real nicely.
Nice, great. Any other discussion? Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket. Go ahead.
I think Mr. Musket is --
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you. I just got a couple of questions, and I think maybe the mayor can answer this best. As I review the whole document here, I do remember, May 1st, we had a document that was dated May 1st, that highlighted, matter of fact, it's still right here, May 1st. There's a lot of verbiage in here that has to do with redevelopment, okay? And materials to be used, reviewing the possible real estate and park development on existing sites. I mean, if we're, we are just buying this as a golf course, why are we spending the money to find this all out?
That is an early proposal. I would not even have a problem if it was stricken out. What I'm concerned about is the projections on the banquet and the golf course currently and going forward.
And I'm glad that you said that, because I think it needs to be stricken out of here, because if I'm looking at this document here, I'm looking at it as we're going to do something as far as developing on it. And this is the reason why we're buying this, is so we don't develop the golf course.
We're the same mindset, so we --
So we can strike this?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, just for the record, we can strike all that verbiage.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, and Mayor, there has to be some hard projections on if the city buys it so it's not sold, that what the banquet facility would do, what the golf course would do, and a plan going forward, right? And so the crunching of the numbers is part of that, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I've received a couple audited statements, which surprised me, from CPA in regards to past performance at the particular center, but it generated a lot of questions. So that's what we're going to be looking at revolving and projecting forward. But we have, we have no need for other alternatives or anything like that.
One more final question. You know, we proceed and we buy the golf course. Would there ever come a case that we decide we wanted to sell the banquet facility and not the golf course? Could we put some provisions in there if that's what happened, that the new owner can't go crazy building on the property?
Well, number one is, we become the new owners, we would control it. No way could any part of that property be sold off without coming before this body and the council approving it. The charter restricts any of us. It requires city council approval to sell any property.
Real estate transfer.
And that's why even like for disposal, if you'll notice periodically, we'll have old desks and stuff, and you might have sat there and said, gee, why are they putting it on the agenda that they're getting our permission to throw away chairs and a desk? Because you, by charter, are the ones that control the purchase and the sale, so, and disposal, so, no.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you very kindly.
But I'd like to clarify something in regards to the development thing, too. There is a possibility for some development that may happen, not necessarily, we're not talking about in terms of housing, but the way, if it stays the way it is status quo, it's obviously not been that profitable. So there may be a chance where you may have to maybe add on whatever it is to that particular facility to make it more viable and bring in possibly more business. So it wouldn't be that far afoot to look at.
Right, but that's not part of the study.
Right, right.
And it would come back, for instance, like one of the things that a couple people mentioned is the pro shop over there and its interference in the -- Okay, so if there was to be an addition to provide a different kind of pro shop or something, we would come back to this body before we did anything.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, the --
Councilman Kaczynski was next.
The concern I see over there is poor management, because to manager, before Torrey's and Bruglio, and before that management that was just before Torrey and Bruglio, that place rocked. I mean, that banquet center was constantly busy.
There was always functions there and --
And so a lot of that is poor management.
Yep.
Because that banquet center should be, there should be something there every weekend.
It was never marketed. I'd call for, if there was going to be a Mother's Day, nobody knew on the phone.
Right, you're right.
But how much of that was the county not allowing them to go further?
No, it's marketing, because it's always been run by the county, but the girl, two people before, I mean, she, you go in there and ask her a question, and before you knew it, you were signing a contract.
I had, my daughter's wedding was there, so I do understand it.
They just dug in, and they advertised, and they beat on your door, and they advertised on their --
They reacted with a chamber.
And, yeah, and then they got a new owner or a new manager, and it kind of slid away, and then Torrey and Bruglio, I mean, they're grass cutters. What do they know about, you know, a banquet center? And then it just went down. But I have to say, as far as golf is concerned, you go by there, 20, you know, morning, noon, and night, any day of the week, it's rocking. The golf is rocking. It's just that their restaurant isn't so hot, and their golf shirts and stuff aren't so hot. But I, you know, with good management in there, I think it's got a chance to make money.
Were you done? Councilman Kaczynski?
I have a question. The, there's a section under Exhibit B, 2.1. I'm not sure I understand what that has to say. It's the second last full sentence. Is that supposed to be in there, or is that a kind of a boilerplate for?
On which page, Councilman?
Well, the way that, the way that I saw that was, we as a city have to designate clearly a person that's going to interface with Daniel Sonnen, President, and Paul Willis, partner of PMC. And I'm going to be that designee, because I'm actually, have already started looking at the financial records. But I want, I want assistance. I mean, I don't, I haven't audited in 25 years, and while I kept my license, I did mostly tax work. I need to get people who really are up to snuff on this, but to keep the cost down low, I want, I'm going to do some of the heavy lifting so that, but I want them to be a partner with us as we come back to you and tell you what the projections are.
Okay. The second question is, we all receive a tax bill that shows Wayne County as a tax revenue stream, and if any of that tax revenue that Wayne County is getting from all of our citizens who pay a tax is allocated to operation and maintenance of the golf course or the banquet hall or any part of that facility, is there a way that we can recover the tax that is being paid to the county when we take ownership of that parcel, would revert to us as a source of revenue?
Not that I'm aware of.
Couple hundred acres worth.
Well, you mean in terms of taxes that we've ended up getting for?
We're paying, we're all paying a Wayne County Parks tax.
Right.
And some of that money has to be allocated to the banquet hall and to the golf course for operation and maintenance as an expense that is funded by that tax revenue, that tax stream. Would we be entitled to recover any of that money as owners of the parcel that is now being designated Wayne County Parks tax?
You know, I'm, sorry, Councilman, I'm not sure that --
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, one more time. What he's talking about is, so the county has the Parks tax.
Right.
A lot of the money is, some of the money is rebated back to the communities that's not used, but that, I would say that that's such a small portion, the area that's got to remain as a park, how much of an area are we talking about?
Yeah, but I'm not necessarily under the impression that we would be able to get some sort of rebate with regard to tax that's imposed under those circumstances anyways. In other words, I understand the underlying premise of the councilman's question, but I'm not sure that that ends up making a difference with regard to how the tax is going to end up being assessed.
Well, the county now collects a tax because there is an expense that they have to pay with that revenue stream. If we become owners of that parcel, are we entitled to that portion of the tax that they're taking in under our umbrella, as our owners?
And are you talking about the Parks Village?
I'm talking, yes.
So, and isn't the parcel, the operational costs that the county will have is nothing, correct? I mean, there's no, once we own the property, the operational costs for Wayne County on that parcel won't be anything, will there?
Would we, maybe we should defer that to either John or John Riley to look into it?
I don't know how to answer that, because in looking at the statements, there was some internal debt assigned to Warren Valley and the Inkster site. And so it becomes, and then for presentation purposes on the audited statements, there's classifications, which is so, the term used is so undefining that I can't tell what it is. And there's about $800,000, so it's a significant dollar amount, but it's not definable as to what it, what's actually being charged. And that's, those are the kind of questions that we're going to get involved with.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. I don't want to get in trouble by saying anything like this, but I did speak with Diane Webb, and this came up, and it's, you know, and I'm going to, hopefully I don't say things that's incorrect, and we can contact Commissioner Webb on this, but she believes that she's going to try, since we're going to increase our park acreage by over 200 acres, that she's going to be able to bring in more park money into the city, so that would offset that. So, that would offset that, that taxes.
More rebate in the village money.
So, we'll get more rebate from the county toward our parks, where we'll be able to use it for recreation or however we divvy that park money up. So, I think the best place to start was with Commissioner Webb, and I think she should be able to answer that question for us or, and look into it. Be a lot easier for her to figure that one out.
So, go ahead, Councilman Kozinski.
The reason why I bring it up is this is an issue that deals with Plant Moran's assignment. Should Plant Moran look at that potential of a recapture of taxes?
That would be another.
It's another.
Yeah. I will have them do it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Councilman Kozinski?
That's it.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share concern that Councilman Musket has already addressed, and that's the language when we received this consultant agreement with Plant Moran, Cressa. And throughout the agreement, and you've addressed it, is the language, you know, about redevelopment and development of Warren Valley Golf Course. And I know when the purchase agreement came before us, I only voted yes because we were reassured that that was not the intent. The intent was to keep it a golf course, but throughout this agreement, it talks about construction materials specifications architect, construction manager. I know, Mr. Mayor, you said you'd have that stricken out. I do believe the motion would have to be amended to say that and define that as well. I think it's important, though, you know, representing our residents, and in particular, Golf Uman or Civic Association, that I'm the president and live in that sub, those residents expressed their concern about the development period. They were very clear, and so I want to see that fulfilled, that we do not develop that, and we respect the wishes of the majority of those residents that did contact us. We still need public input, talk about a vision. And again, I would like to see that, the motion, or as a friendly amendment or amendment to take that language out, because you're seeking the allocation of $30,000 for redevelopment survey.
We're talking now, though, about the Plant Moran, their real estate division, Cressa, their agreement relating to Warren Valley Golf Course. As far as the vision for, so, so if a purchase agreement has worked out and a closing date set, we'll have to prove that, and at that time, we can discuss that.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, this is asking, by the motion, the allocation of $30,000, which includes the redevelopment survey. That's part of what they do. That is what is outlined in here. If that's going to be the case, what, Mr. Mayor, you have said, you would strike it out, you're okay with it, then the motion needs to be amended to do so.
Yeah, I agree.
To truly protect that.
The only, my only thought is this, so Plant Moran, I'm sure they have somebody dotting their Ts and crossing their Is and all their contacts and agreements.
There's no problem. It's, I've exceded out on mine, the one I signed.
So, here, just make a motion to remove...
If I give somebody a retain agreement, they start, well, I would say, you know, wait a minute.
No, this is scope of work, and we define the scope. The reason we're under the gun to some extent, I told you I would bring any and all agreements back. We started to get the financial material, and so I put it on as was originally presented. Could I get a, could I have gotten a additional one? I could have, but I would have had difficulty getting it on the agenda for tonight. So, I'm more than willing to, I got the old one, and we can strike out what we don't want, and that was the easier way.
So, with the, with the deletion of any...
Redevelopment proposal regarding...
Development language.
Redevelopment.
Under the scope of work.
Yeah, so we just redo the...
Maker and the support, okay with that amendment?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Are you okay with the amendment?
Yes.
Do we get support on it?
Any further discussion?
Support.
Tom, you were the support.
I supported. How do you like that?
I remember that.
Go ahead. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Do I have the resolution for 8B?
Fill that amendment out for the council secretary.
That, that we approve the Plant Moran, Cressa agreement relating to Warren Valley.
Striking out...
Striking out language under scope of, regarding redevelopment.
Scope of work regarding redevelopment.
It's redevelopment, development. It's both. The language is in redevelopment and development.
Redevelopment and development.
I didn't say specifically what the language would end up being.
Yeah. Anything related to that.
We got it.
Maybe Counselor Miatki will, will understand what we're talking about when we talk about somebody changing a retain or agreement.
Counselor, do you...
We just take out.
In any event...
All right. It would look like it would end up being the two bullet points on page two, the one starting with DH is interested in reviewing possible real estate and park development on the existing site, and then, this one right here, Matt?
Yeah, facilities be constructed of normal...
The facilities to be constructed of normal, durable, and readily available materials as used in the construction of public facilities, which is the fifth bullet point. Yeah. And, and that would seem to deal with it, and maybe in the preliminary information on page one, where it ends up saying, it's facilities and potential site redevelopment, strike out potential site redevelopment.
Yes.
And remember, before we approve the actual purchase, we'll have further discussion about those issues, about... Any further discussion?
We already voted.
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't vote.
We did vote. We did vote. We're moving on.
So, Counsel, do you have a...
Resolution.
Resolution for me for 8B?
Oh, I'll just read it. You'll have a harder time reading my writing.
Sorry.
Resolution number, whereas the Old Orchard Pond...
Well, he hasn't called 8B yet.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize.
Go ahead, please. All right. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also for Mayor Paletko, proposed improvements to Old Orchard Pond in the River Oaks subdivision.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
I'd like to defer this to council to read the resolution that we're proposing as 8B.
Whereas the Old Orchard Pond located within the River Oaks Estates subdivision has experienced significant problems. Whereas Wade Trim has conceived of a project to improve water quality within the Old Orchard Pond that is expected to remedy the problems to a very great extent. Whereas the city council has requested and received advisory petitions from property owners within the River Oaks Estates subdivision showing sufficient interest in the city making a special assessment for the purpose of permitting the project improvements to be made. Therefore, pursuant to Section 27.3 of the city code, the city council directs the Department of Public Works to make an investigation of the proposed public improvements and to report its findings to the city council by way of a report containing the analysis and recommendations required by Section 27.3 of the city code.
I move, I move that the city council support the resolution.
And support. Support by Councilman Abdullah. You'll get that language over to our secretary?
Sure.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, does that have to be read twice now, like an ordinance?
No.
No, it's a resolution. Any, any further discussion? We did have a study session on this issue prior to... All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8C, also for Mayor Paletko, dual and stipulated amendment to financing plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council adopt the attached resolution concerning the, what do I want to call it? Finance plan. Adopt a attached resolution and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it as outlined in 8C.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Just so everyone knows, we also had a study session and the Water and Sewer Attorney about this issue prior to the meeting. Any, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8D, also for Mayor Paletko, appointment to fill vacancy on the Tifa Board and the Brownfield Board.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Musket?
I move council concur with Mayor Paletko in appointing Mr. William Davis, who resides at 25676 Locklomen in Dearborn Heights, to the Tifa and Brownfield Board, the term to expire December of 218 as outlined in 8D.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Under 9A, reports from city officials...
Mr. Chairman, 8E.
Oh, yes. St. Linus.
Mr. Chairman.
The next item on the agenda, item 8E, the approving the St. Linus Catholic Church annual St. Linus Festival and Bike Parade.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Thank you. I move to approve this St. Linus Catholic Church permission to hold their annual St. Linus Festival Bike and Blade Parade on Friday, September 8th, 2017, 5:00 PM, as outlined in 8E.
Support. Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, the next item on the agenda, item 9A, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, budget transfer request.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Musket?
I move council approve Chief Gavin's request for the budget transfer from utilities to telephone in the amount of $12,000 as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of concurring with Police Chief Gavin regarding the budget transfer request, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9B, from Human Resources Director Sabota Perry, agreement for interim Gatsby 45 report.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council concur and approve the contractual relationship between the City of Dearborn Heights and Nyhard Company in the amount of $2,250. The work for next year will be $10,000, and this will be budgeted in the next fiscal year as outlined in 9B.
Support.
If you want the $10,000 explanation.
That's what I was going to ask.
Elizabeth, I did.
Okay. Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Abdullah? I had a question for the HR director in terms of, we had quite a drastic jump up from $2,250 to $10,000 next year. I just want clarification on that.
So, this year, it follows Gatsby 45. Next year, it's Gatsby 75. From everything that I've been told, this is a very good rate from Nyhard. I've been working directly with our auditors on this already. Gatsby 75 is going to involve more work on my part and a lot more work on the actuarial group, so that's why it's more significant, and it's going to take longer as well. So, we'll get more direction, but from everything that I've been told, this is a very good price.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Community Economic Development Director Joe Hashem, CDBG fiscal year 2015 Berwin improvements carpet installation project.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move city council approve the payment of the attached invoice for green builders plus in the amount of $14,893.15 for the 2015 Berwin Carpet Installation Project and return all unsuccessful bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
I need to authorize a comptroller and a treasurer to issue the check.
And add that. Councilwoman Horvath?
I have a question.
Yes.
What, this is for Mr. Hashem. How long has this company been in business? Do you know?
This company has been in business for a long time. We went off the bid, we received... We received two bids the first, the first time, so we had to go out for bids again, and then we received two bids. It's a reputable company. They did a great job. They had, they removed all the asbestos from the property, from the location, and they did a great job, actually.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9D, from Brownfield Administrator Carmen Olivero, 2017, 2018 Brownfield Budget Proposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kozinski?
I move council approve the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority budget for the period 20,000, 2017, 2018, as indicated in item 9D, in the amount of $62,413.29.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I just had a question for the administrator, Carmen Olivero. Throughout this, all there was is Tim Horns and Walgreens. Tim Horns and Walgreens. I'm just curious why only those two particular companies?
Those are the two that are left that we did. We've done four in the city. The two have been paid off, and these are the remaining for the other two, the remaining amounts. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, permanent traffic control device, no parking sounds, signs on southbound Kinlock from Ford Road to Dock State.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Berry?
Move city council concur with the posting of the southbound Kinlock to Ford Road to Dock State or no parking signs as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Any announcements? Any announcements from anybody at the table? Councilwoman Clayton?
Two things. I'd like to go back to my vote on I-8A, change that, please, to no. And then the second thing I have is an announcement for the Salvation Army.
What is AD?
That is the Plant Moran...
The Plant Moran, Cressa...
Yeah, I just don't like that. So, yes. And that should be, that's allowable.
I know it's allowable, but I was wondering, being that you recommended striking it out, and we striked it out.
I did, and I'm still going with no. I don't have to explain it.
Clerk, clerk, so is that sufficient for Councilwoman Clayton to...
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
The second thing I have is an announcement for Salvation Army, the back-to-school supply drive, which is going on right now through the month of August. And we have drop-off locations at the Eaton Senior Center, which is 4900 Party, the Berwin Senior Center, 26155 Richardson, as well as both libraries, Carolyn Kennedy and John F. Kennedy Library. And you can always drop off school supplies at the Salvation Army on Warren, which is 26700 West Warren. They are collecting items, traditional school supplies, notebooks, pencils, pens, markers, crayons. The distribution will be on August 30th, so actually before the 30th would be great, and that would be to students of our community that have a need. We want the kids to get a great start to this school year, to have what they need, and it also builds self-esteem for them to have those school supplies. So, we hope to have your support when you're out and about, pick up a few items, and we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Musket? A couple of things. One, I guess I'm going to go to one of my old pet peeves before I was a councilman, the gas station on Michigan and Gully. I spoke with the owner, and he promised me he'd do a lot of cleaning up and everything, and it's not happening. The place is blighted. It's very blighted. And there's also an old closed service station, I believe it was the Clark Gas Station on Van Born that's east of Telegraph. That has become a real bad eyesore. We need to find a way to raise those buildings, okay? It's an eyesore. Matter of fact, the one on Gully and Michigan Avenue, you got trees growing out of the roof.
The one on Van Born is listed for sale with the Realtors.
I understand that.
Which hasn't been listed for a long time.
And, you know, the thing is, is these gas stations, harder to sell a gas station now, and, you know, without opening up a party store inside of them, and there's just not enough room at Michigan and Gully for that type of service station, plus the competition of the two service stations right there owned by the same person who owns the vacant lot. And the one on Van Born, again, it, the property's small to put anything else on it. And we've got tanks in the ground, and God knows what's going on with those tanks that they've been closed for years. And we've got to find a way to put pressure on someone or to do something ourselves to take those buildings down, because it is turned into a horrible sight. The people in the neighborhood don't like them. I know, I travel Gully and Michigan and Telegraph to Van Born and Van Born to Southfield on a daily basis, and it just kills me to see those two properties sitting there in poor condition like that. So, I don't know what it's gonna take, but I urge our mayor or our corporate council there to find a way that we can clean them properties up. I mean, I know Mr. McIntyre worked on it, and he had the guy come out and paint it. He did a great, and our ordinance director did a great job doing that.
Tell the owner to lower the price so he can sell.
Well, I've talked to the owner, okay? And, and he assures me, you know, he's assured me a year ago. I didn't mention it for almost a year, because he promised me he was gonna do something, and then Mr. McIntyre stepped in and at least got him to paint it and reboard it up and did a good job, but now it's starting to look horrible again.
Yeah, those will be developed when, if somebody, when and if somebody buys the property.
But in the meantime, nobody's gonna buy it with that building there.
Us condemning them.
I mean, we condemned one of our own buildings. Why can't we condemn those buildings?
I don't, I don't think those properties yet are that bad where we.
Oh, yes, they are. Yeah. I mean, you've got trees growing out of the roof on one, okay? Just drive by there and look at the trees growing out of the roof.
Mayor, with the old Bill Brown property on Van Born, whatever it was, that, we didn't condemn that. The city bought it and then tore the building down, correct? The property on Van Born where there was, it was Bill Brown's Magnavox years ago, and then became Three Storefronts, and then it was just abandoned? Did the city buy that?
I don't think so.
I don't remember that.
I don't think so. The house.
Several years ago.
Yeah, this is going back well before.
You built it without permits, right?
You got the same explanation from Mr. Curry that I did.
I'm sure you did.
I told him a few times. He at one time even suggested that he was going to move the Burger King over on the corner, and that never happened.
Correct.
I didn't know how he was gonna fit a Burger King in that. And then on top of it is the sign, which doesn't really add to the development of that particular property, but he sold that big sign that's hovering over there.
You know, you've got trash in the parking lot, you got weeds, now people are parking cars there.
Keep sending ordinance out there. Keep taking them.
We'll, we'll talk amongst ourselves again and see if there's something we can do, but.
My big thing is also the tanks that are in the ground, okay? God knows what.
State issue, that's the.
I understand that, but we can, but we can help. I mean, we can at least ask the state to do something. I've even called the EPA on it, and those tanks weren't closed properly, okay? So, what are we waiting for? I mean, it's our city.
Yeah, but that, regarding underground storage tanks, that's a DEQ and state fire, and the Fire Marshal, our Fire Marshal issue.
They do routine, the DEQ does routine inspections on them, though. Cause I, I'm in contact with them about those. Recently, when we had a similar situation with a Clark Station, and we had, the DEQ was involved with that, too. And we have had them in court. It has looked, the Van Born one has listed for sale, and they're pretty hopeful that they might have a buyer for it, so.
Good, good.
We just had them in court recently. We made them paint the wall, paint the property. They had to seal some things up on the, on the ground. But as far as the Van Born one goes, you know, we did get them to clean it up last year. We had them paint it. We even had to string some chains up to try to prevent cars from going in and out. They cut the chains. And I worked with Dave Brogan, our Fire Chief, to find out if we could put, have them install a thicker gauge steel, so that they couldn't cut it. We gotta make sure that the fire carbon needs to get in there, that they can cut through the chain, so. But we can, we'll go back out there again. I, I talk to the owner quite regularly. He's always very accommodating. He goes out there and he, you know, cleans things up when we remind him to, you know, do so.
Unfortunately, Mr. McIntyre, it's too bad that you have to remind him to clean up his own property. That is just extra work for you that you really don't need to do, and I commend you for doing what you do, really do. I truly believe that you do a great job in ordinance. Truly, I do.
Any?
I got a great team.
You done, Councilman Musket?
I'm done, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other announcements? This, our next session will be another study session on whether our current ordinance regarding marijuana dispensaries should be changed. Currently, the laws in Dearborn Heights, as it is in several other cities, that dispensaries are not allowed. Whether or not medical marijuana can be used, that's decided at the state level, and has been decided, but the, the, their next meeting will be a study session on, amongst other things, any changes to our existing ordinance on allowing dispensaries.
I mean, dispensaries or growing facilities, et cetera.
Yeah, changes to our ordinance.
Let's see the date. Council Chair, what is the date on that?
A week from tonight.
29.
Next Tuesday. And, well, Chief, I want to talk to you afterwards regarding having somebody from your department there talk about the. Go ahead, Mike.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of upcoming events at the library. First off, Wednesday, August 23rd, at Carolyn Kennedy Library at 6:30 PM, we will be having a program on the farmer's market. Join Renee Chudkowski, the great foodini, as she talks about eating seasonably and reasonably from our local farmer's markets, while delivering a fun, delicious presentation. Next Thursday, August 24th, at 7:00 PM at the Carolyn Kennedy Library, we will have a program on the wonder of birds. Join Dr. Craig Purdue as he talks about behavioral ecology and shares his experience with birds, and explains how they impact the world. He will also go into songs and calls, identification, habitat, nesting, and so much more. Live birds will be at the show, so come on over and take a gander. Finally, I want to thank everyone who came out to see the clips.
Not intended, right?
Oh, very intended, very intended, very intended. I want to thank everyone who came out to see the clips. Everyone was well behaved and shared. We certainly did not have enough glasses, but very encouraging things, seeing so many people passing around glasses and enjoying themselves, and it was a really, really good experience, so I just want to thank everyone for that. So, it was a lot of fun. So, that's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Question.
Yep.
You stated local farmer's market. I asked a while ago if we could have a local farmer's market, and for many reasons, I was told no. Where's the local farmer's market around here?
The greater Dearborn area.
Oh.
The greater Dearborn area, I'd say. I mean, there's ones locally, you know, they're here and there.
There's one in Dearborn, put up by the chamber, I think.
Yeah.
Is there one in Garden City?
In Westland.
In Westland, I know there's one. I don't know Garden City, but, yeah, so those are a couple of them. Okay. Thank you.
Mike, thank you. Chief Brogan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to remind everyone that this Saturday, August 26th, we'll be having our 25th Annual Chili Cook-Off, starting at noon. The cook-off is held at Parkland Park. This year, we're gonna be in the lower part of the park. As you guys know, the, there are ongoing improvements in the upper portion, so if you drive by down Parkland, don't see us. It's the same entrance, just, just come on down, there'll be signs to direct you down to the Lower Parkland Park, and that's where the picnic's at this year. The proceeds will be going to the Great Lakes Burn Camp, until the Dearborn Heights Firefighters Charity Fund. The Great Lakes Burn Camp is a summer camp specifically for kids who have been burned in a fire. We've had our, some of our firefighters go out there and volunteer, and everyone comes back impressed with what a great camp it is, and what an impact it has on those kids, and an impact on the firefighters, too. We've had a lot of success in the past. We usually raise about $10,000, which sends 20 kids to camp. So, again, it's, it's all for a great cause, and it's a good time, so we hope to see you guys out there. I know the council and the mayor will want to thank you guys for, for chipping in for the entertainment. You guys always do that, and we appreciate it every year.
And we're doing it again this year.
Yes, yep, and we, and we thank you once again. So, again, August 26th, which is this Saturday, at Lower Parkland Park, they start at noon. It runs till dusk, with the chili judging will begin around 2:00. And I do have some flyers. If anyone's interested and wants some more information, you can catch me after the meeting.
Thank you.
Also, while I'm up here, I want to remind everybody about our smoke detector program. You guys know that was funded by the AFG grant, and it's geared towards senior citizens and for people that are living in low-income neighborhoods. In this grant, our firefighters come out to your home, and we install smoke detectors, along with a carbon monoxide detector and a fire extinguisher. And so, if you're interested, please give us a call. Call Lieutenant Lisa Martin at 313-791-3658, and you can talk to her to find out if you're eligible or not, and then we'll schedule a time to come out and install it. And we've had a lot of great feedback, and it's been a really, really successful program, so.
Chief, does that count for me, too? I'm a senior.
Sure, sure.
Well, come on over.
We need to see proof.
Come on over anyway, and, and pretend like you're putting them on and have a bite to eat.
All right, that sounds good, Councilman. All right, thank you.
Chief.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention the fact that, thank you for the, to the police department and the officers that went shopping with kids to school.
You're welcome. It was a week and a half ago, I think it was, we had a shop with a hero. So, we had 20 families, correction, 20 kids, about seven different families, and in conjunction with Target, they gave us a couple thousand dollars. So, each kid got about $100 to buy school supplies, clothing, and all that, so we were set up with one family, immigration, immigrants, and they had seven kids, so it really come in special for them to get all those items. So, it worked out, and we thank Target for working in conjunction with us. So, thank you, Marge.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Hey, hearing none. Any members of the audience, please stand up and say your name and the street you live on, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Are we gonna have to buy this?
We've got the, we've got the timer this time. Go ahead.
Okay, my name's Dan. I'm sorry?
State your name and the street you live on.
I was. Just gotta listen, listen to me. Danny McWilliams. My sister Paula Warren, we live at 23450 Hanover Street, where you're ripping the houses down, okay? We've been appraised once, we've been appraised twice. Compliant with everything you guys are asking us to do. We've accepted the offer that you've tentatively given us. I'm confused as to whether that number is a real number, has the state approved that? I get conflicting information from everybody. Mr. Dan?
Hold it.
I just want a real answer, please.
Danny, I've told you, and I've told your sister.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know you did.
Yeah.
But I'm hearing so much other stuff, Kristy, I'm sorry. I got a call into you today, you know.
You did, you called me later on today, and I was gonna call you back tomorrow. I have your letter, but, but my problem, not my problem, but my concern, and the residents' concern, I met with another, um, group of residents and their families last Saturday. You guys gotta stop listening to neighbors on the other side of the street. Contact me, we're still waiting from the state.
I tried to, but you know, my problem is, I need to start the ball rolling for us to move out of that house this weekend. And my real question is, Mayor Dan, it's yes or no. When I have the house empty, and I bring you the keys, do I get paid?
No.
Yes or no? Because I cannot afford to, what, what happened? Why? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Rick, your comments to the chair. Go ahead.
We have to wait for the state's approval. As soon as we get that, I'll let you know, and it takes about a week to 10 days to get the title work, to get the closing.
Okay, when do we, as a team here, when do we feel we're gonna get the state's approval?
I've told you before, I don't know. It should be any day. They ask questions of the appraisal.
Could it be like next February?
No, Danny, you know that it's not.
No, I don't know. I really don't.
Okay, well, that's.
Because I've got some things on the line that are pretty tough, stretching me, you know, like Stretch Armstrong, and I need to know, you know, do I make the move now, or do I wait, or, you know, please?
What I told you is what I told all residents. If you have the means to move, that's fine. But I told all the residents, until I get the letter and you sign that purchase agreement, until I get that letter from the state and sign that purchase agreement, that number's not guaranteed.
Okay, so, we don't really know what's going on.
No, understand, so, we got grant money.
Yeah, I know that.
This is a real estate deal.
Yeah.
The, the city is administering the money, but as far as the specifics, that's not anything that the council's gonna address, that's, you're gonna deal with the administrative assistant.
Well, that's what I'm doing, right now.
Yeah, but it's.
No, but yeah, but what? Look, man, I have things on the line, out of state, where I'm hooked up. To, to get into a house, I can't afford to pay two mortgages. I'm not doing a bridge loan, okay? I'm, I'm like, you know, is this number real? Okay, you could tell the bank it's real. I've been told that, okay. I go tell my bank it's real, maybe I could stop the next two payments and.
Don't you agree you would deal with the other side in the real estate transaction and get those questions answered before you would come to council?
And, and, and just to be clear.
Get what questions answered?
That, that, I never told you to stop your mortgage payments.
No, no, I know that. No, no, you said, I could tell my bank. You could tell my, I could tell my bank that that number was real.
Okay, yeah, but.
Cause the mayor said it was a go. That's what your words were.
I didn't say the mayor said it was a go.
Yeah, you, you, you need to talk to the other.
All right, all right, I don't want, it's, it's, whatever.
Well, could she call you? Kristy, will you be calling him tomorrow?
I'll call him as soon as I get the state's answer. I spoke to you last week, and I spoke to you the week before.
I, I know you did. I just wanted.
Just keep updated.
Put my face in front of you and ask the question, should I pull the trigger on myself, moving right now, and getting the money after I get out of there, or should I wait?
I would wait until we receive that particular letter, and then there's that purchase agreement. I would not enter in another transaction, because I wouldn't watch you hear two weeks from now.
That's what I want to hear.
And you having two mortgages. That would be the worst-case scenario, so don't do it.
Yeah, it'll, I'll.
But, yeah, I mean, you could.
So, Mr. Dan, Mayor Dan.
You could.
Buddy, listen here, you know, how, and when am I going to get this information? Like, let's say if you get it, are you gonna disseminate it through a letter?
She'll, what do you do? Call him?
I call you, like I always do, Danny.
We'll call you as soon as we get it.
I've always called you.
I know, but this is a question, Kristy, that you, you've educated me on a lot of things, but this is something that I forgot to ask you last time.
Do you have a Realtor, anyone that, are you handling this deal yourself?
Yes.
No, I said, do you have a Realtor? No, I said, do you have a Realtor?
Yes, me.
Just you?
I'm the Realtor, yeah.
Yep. So, this is what you find out, we'll give you a call.
Isn't there, isn't there a time period where he's allowed to stay after the, even after the closing, or he has to be out by closing?
No, and that's another thing that, no, no, we, we go through that about once a week because there's misinformation on social media and other things. The grant is the grant is the grant, the grant has never changed, the grant was the grant. Before we received it, the grant will be the grant, after, if there's another catastrophe and another...
Okay, so I have a tentative number that possibly could change, fine, good enough, right? We're going to expect something from the state within, what, two weeks, a month? Are you looking at that? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, and at that time, I could make a move. But then, you're pretty confident the number's gonna stay kinda where it's at?
I don't wanna say that. It, it did with the other appraisals, but I, I never committed to that number, I said...
Well, it was appraised at that number, that's the number I accepted.
Again, regarding the specifics...
But you didn't officially accept anything, Danny, I gave you an update.
We can't be having, she can meet with you after the meeting, you can call it tomorrow. Despite the conversation regarding the specifics of your deal, anything regarding real estate has to be in writing, that's not for us to shout across the room and address.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, what people don't understand is that this was grant money...
One at a time.
And, and the administrative assistant doesn't make any of the rules. Those rules were given to her by the people who gave us the grant, unfortunately, she's just...
Let me tell you something, I don't, I know this, I just wanted a yes or no from Mr. Dan, he told me what I wanted to know.
Yes.
We don't have anything in writing from the state saying that the number is real, so we can't, I can't talk to my bank, and I can't start to make my move until I hear from you in writing or by phone call, which is it gonna be?
Christie, we'll give you a phone call.
And you're figuring in the next couple weeks, month?
The state is contacting me again tomorrow morning. We have weekly meetings.
Okay.
We have weekly meetings over the phone.
All right.
I usually call, well, I always call once I get an update to you guys, and I will call again. If they have an update that says by the end of the week, I'll give you a call. If they say it's gonna be another couple weeks, I'll give you a call. If they say they don't know it's still in the process, I'll call you as soon as I know what time.
Can you do me a favor so I can just get out of this, whatever the hell his name is here? Listen, can you call me tomorrow, please?
We're way out of line, honestly.
Honestly?
Yes, Danny, I, you call me this afternoon?
I'll talk to you tomorrow, thank you.
It's very rude to laugh.
Yeah, you ain't right, man, you know what, I'll tell you what, you know what?
He's out of...
You're, you're big shit, right? Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm supposed to be running the meeting.
Look, buddy, it's not your life on the line, it's mine and hers, all right?
Okay.
All right? It's, you're dealing with people's lives here. This is not a park or a fair or county, you know.
There's also procedure regarding the meeting.
He's done, he's done. Anybody else?
Turn us out.
Go ahead, Genevieve.
Nancy, that was my mother. I don't believe I need the microphone, but just a quick announcement, RHS is having a reunion. That stands for both Rovishaugh High School currently in Dearborn Heights and the previous school that finished out in 1960, Inkster Roosevelt. It'll be on September 2nd, Saturday, at the Tyrone Wheatley Park. Somebody may recognize the name, he played in the NFL. It will be at the school, you can go in the door by the cafeteria and the gym area between 9:00 and noon and see yearbooks forever. I think they're only missing 1965. And the reunion itself will run from 9:00 until 7:00 PM, everyone is welcome, and we would like a nice turnout for everyone. Also, if anyone needs gas tonight, tomorrow, it is a lot cheaper on Michigan Avenue right now, like 20 cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Nancy, Colgate Street.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Please state your name, though we know it, and the street you live on.
It's Art Taylor. I live on Culver Street. Probably the oldest one in here, 73 years old, and I'm glad I'm here. I had to call EMS to go to the hospital, and got out of the hospital, and EMS charged me $850 for the ride to the hospital. My insurance is gonna pick it up now, but that's a lot of money to go six blocks, you know, and I just wanna bring it up. And my taxes on my property, I appreciate the people working with me because I am on a fixed income, and what I'm trying to do is trying to get my life together and try to get the stuff that I've had out of my life, and it's took a while. And I appreciate the city working with me, Jack working with me, and everybody else. And I can say it on, 'cause we're gonna be TV, I got a frame machine, and I got a lift, and I got welders and stuff that I wanna get rid of, that I wanna sell to make money. I put up with it for 10 years, and it's now as old as I am, I don't think I'm gonna take that step forward. I'm gonna stay where I'm at, you know, and Lisa, she knows who I am, and there's quite a few people here that know who I am, so I mean...
Thank you.
Yeah, you know who I am.
I know you.
Well, I don't wanna say my new name on here because my new name is...
Art, thank you.
I don't wanna say my new name.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're, I appreciate it, I appreciate the mayor, and I appreciate everybody else on the board helping me out, and I said, I've got a hernia right now, and that's why I got my hand where I got it, to hold it in. And it's just that, you have to do one thing at a time, you know? And how many people are over 73 years old? There ain't too many, but me.
Thank you.
You have a nice day.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait, there's another one?
Hope we got one more gentleman.
I apologize. You gotta come up and...
My name's Ron Frenzy, live over on Fairwood, and I was here in 2014, 15, and 16 concerned about the roads in the, the repair of the roads over on Lewis Manor subdivision, which is north of Ford Road and between Target and Inkster. And during 14, 15, and 16, the roads were, were in bad shape, and they were repaired a little, but not a lot. So, I contacted, so I took a different tact this year in the spring, contacted Mr. Zimmer, and he mentioned that the roads would be asphalted pretty soon. And so, in June, about six blocks were, were asphalted, but it was done, to me, in an unusual way. In most streets in that area, the, the cars travel in the middle of the street, which makes sense. So, when it was asphalted, it was asphalted not in the middle of the street, which where cars travel, it was asphalted near the curbs where cars park. And so, I got two questions. One is, is it possible to finish the job? A couple of my neighbors came up to me, says, is Dearborn Heights going broke because they didn't finish the job? They did two-thirds of the street. It'd be like if you hired somebody to paint your house and you wanted three rooms painted and only two were painted. It didn't make sense. And the other thing is, I live on Fairwood, north of Ford Road, on Fairwood, north of Midway, and that street's got the most potholes and the biggest potholes than all the streets, and it wasn't even touched. So, I wondered, my second question is, and Mr. Muscat, I think his mother lives on that street.
Yeah, yeah, I travel it every day.
There you go. So, in, every year, I probably broom up about 150 pounds of asphalt, so I wondered when that street will be fixed, from, from curb to curb, and then when, and then the other six streets that were paved, where asphalted on the curbs, if they could be asphalted in the middle, so it looks like the job is done.
Director Zimmer, do you have any comments on the...
As you're aware, we came, we had 50,000 budgeted for a temporary fix on the portion of Fairwood, um, south of Midway, only to get that to the point where it would survive maybe one more winter, because north of Midway is out for bids right now, so we're expecting end of the month. The 30th bids should be open for that subdivision north of Midway.
So, will the whole street be asphalted, or just, just where the curbs are?
It's a brand-new street, curb to curb.
We, we only had 33,000 square feet for the money that we had, but actually, we were able to stretch that to about 44,000 square feet and take care of just the worst spots on those particular roads, and just so that they would survive another winter, and then next year, we're hoping to get that, the other half of that subdivision done.
Because it just make, it just, it just was unusual that, that it was paved near the curb where people don't drive, but, but it wasn't paved in the center where the cars do drive. I don't get it.
There was only like a two-foot span that, that wasn't covered by the, the new asphalt, and that's because...
It's really a lot more, two foot is only like that.
Yeah, well, that's because...
It's going out for bid, though, so it's gonna get me done.
The majority, majority of the curb lines were in the worst condition, so we tried to address those first.
So, those six blocks, they'll be, they'll be done in the centers?
You're just safe that they're going out for bid on it? What we did is, the cost of that project, because we keep asking, and the state legislature keeps not funding adequately for road repairs, so what we did is, we talked, and the Council approved the budget, over a two-year period, that whole area's gonna get redone, but it's how much, 3 million? Remember the cost?
One and a half million.
One and a half million, so it's going over two periods to, two years to get done, but it's a brand-new rebuild, curb to curb, correct?